Hi y'all, welcome to the Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. Terrific Tuesday. Woo, big win last night for the state of Louisiana because there were no taxes passed and that's just one man's opinion. And I am joined to my right, and nobody's to my right, you know, you ought to brag about this. Representative Blake Megas, who by the way has come in and I'm gonna visit with Blake as well. First of all, good morning.
Good morning, how you doing?
Good, and then I wanna, I wanna, I wanna talk to the guy that's the Speaker of the House, Mr. Taylor Barra, who was yesterday at a press conference, the governor blamed you for everything. They didn't say if you got John F. Kennedy, but apparently you got taxes and that was enough. Anyway, Taylor Barra joins, Speaker of the House. Taylor, how you doing?
Good morning, Moon. I'm doing fine.
Well, good. And by the way, I'll say it again, congratulations. I personally think it was a win for some, for the people in the state that didn't have to pay any more taxes, at least today. I know there's gonna be another session. I know there's probably gonna be some more tax talk. I understand all that stuff. What I'm not understanding that maybe you can help me with, yesterday, in the governor's press conference, it was all about how you lack leadership, how you didn't get your people together. And one of the things that was disturbing and I want you to address, he said, "Y'all had cut a deal and made a deal, and yet you didn't come through." And I don't understand it because as I watched this, Speaker of the House, Barra, I watched Democrats vote for less taxes than the Republicans did. I, I watched, I watched bills come forward that Republicans let out of the committee, like the one on excess itemized deductions, that Republicans did. And so, I wonder how you get blamed for all this. Anyway, just your thoughts on what's going on right now and what the governor said.
Certainly. And, and you know, he's, he's continually commenting on a, a deal. And you know, back in, in the fall, when we first started talking about what could, could develop into a framework of what we would use as we approached the special session. And he needed to make the decision as to whether he was gonna call the session or not. So, you know, he, he kept referring to it as "not calling the session unless we have a deal." Well, and, and I've said this to the press a number of times, I, I, I'm, I mean, the word "deal" is probably just, it, 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 it completely rubs me the wrong way in that, that's an insinuation that, that, you know, he and I, behind closed doors, are gonna come up with something that we're gonna announce to the legislature and the public that's gonna happen. And I was not gonna be any part of that. Now, if we were gonna sit down and talk options and, and talk through what we thought would be items that could be considered by both Democrats and Republicans as a, as a, as a compromise as we went through in the negotiation, certainly I, I continued to discuss with him what I thought were options and certainly took some things off the table that were not gonna be options. You know, he, he continued to say, "I won't call the session until I have a deal." Um, I, I, I mean, I said it to my members a couple of days ago on the floor of the House. Um, the public deserved some weigh-in. If you're gonna call a special session, the main part of the session is committee meetings where the public can come testify about what's gonna be proposed and what's before them. There's no reason for us, you know, whether it's us, the Senate and the governor, to have a deal behind closed doors and then come out and announce it and say, "We really don't need a session. We're gonna have to have it because this is what's gonna happen." I mean, I, I didn't wanna put my name to anything that was considered a deal, when in fact, we needed to debate it in the House and the Senate and we needed the public to weigh in. So, I, I mean, I disagree with the, the, the frame-up that he's using that we cut a deal and, and the Republicans didn't hold up their end of the deal. And
By the way, by the way, that's why I said earlier, if you really go look at the votes, I went and looked at it. The Republicans voted for more taxes than the Democrats did. If you really look at a lot of the votes, they did. They tried to help the process along. I'm not making that up. I can go, I'm, and of course, I don't have to do it with you and Blake sitting here, Representative Megas. But, I mean, the, the deal is though, y'all did come up and try to vote for some stuff, and that's not how this session failed. Not from lack of leadership and not, not from lack of trying on y'all's part.
That's correct. And, and I mean, the description of lack of leadership, it, it has happened since I was elected Speaker in 2016. Anytime they, you know, don't get their, their, their choices and they don't get us to pass taxes or, you know, whatever the case may be, it's always a lack of leadership when you're not raising taxes. You know, I, I think, I think we're getting, getting used to that rhetoric, but at the same time, um, it is, it is just the opposite. When, when, when we sat down and walked through this, I sent a letter to him in late January before he made the call, that, that Republicans would consider some renewal of taxes, not a new tax anywhere on that board, but some renewal of taxes in exchange for some budget reform that we had been trying to pass for two years, that, that, you know, our, our bipartisan committee that, um, he continues to reference to so many times, and, and what they considered tax reform, there wasn't a budget reform recommendation in that report from two years ago. It is those kinds of things, transparency and spending, a, a recalculation of our expenditure cap to make it a more relevant number going forward. Those were the kinds of the things we wanted to include. If we were gonna exchange for some rule of, renewal of revenue, we wanted to have a framework of budget reform that would be coupled with it and, and that combination would have given us the best option to find a solution to the cliff.
Speaker Barra, this is Representative Megas here. You bring up a good point. I was listening to the governor earlier and all he wanted to talk about was the missed revenue, the tax increases that were not passed. Never once did he mention all the different reforms that you had sent in a letter to the governor saying that, "Look, our taxpayers and our constituents back home have spoken. We want them to build trust back in government. We want a government to run more efficiently." These are some of the things that need to be done in the long term to, to make that happen. And you've applied that in the letter. And the governor did not weigh in this morning and said whether he supported or he did not support that. And I have a feeling that he did not support any of those reform measures. The only reason why he was having that discussion with you was so that he could get those tax increases that he was looking for. And when you have that much separation in a conversation, don't you think that the governor needs to have an understanding of what the taxpayers of this state really want? They wanna have trust back in government. I, I welcome any comments that you have on that.
Yeah. And, and, and if you look at the way the, the session unfolded, um, it came down to the acceptance of those reforms is where the, the negotiations started to, to break down. Um, he, he, he supported in principle the, the five, um, options I had put out there in the letter. Um, three Medicaid, um, efficiency programs where we would introduce the beginning of what would, would develop into a work requirement once the CMS, um, Medicaid group in Washington approved it. Um, some eligibility tightening where we let the legislative auditor go into the, um, Department of Hospitals files and confirm eligibility on Medicaid. That needs to be tightened up somewhat. And then certainly a co-pay, which was the most complicated one, because it involves hospitals, physicians, you know, providers of all types, a little more complicated. But those three Medicaid efficiency programs, suggestions that we were putting out there that turned into bills, and the two I mentioned earlier, transparency and, and the, the expenditure limit, he, he agreed to in principle. In fact, he included all five of them in the, in the call for the session when he made it in February.
But these are common sense measures. Why, I mean, if you go home and talk to your constituents, I know that, you know, people are very compassionate in this state. We wanna help others. But if you don't, if you're, if you're, if you're not telling the truth on your tax returns or you're not really eligible for a specific government program, you shouldn't receive and be receiving that program. We need to take those dollars and use it on the people that really need help. We need more transparency in government. The taxpayers deserve to know where every penny is being spent. And Mr. Speaker, the most important bill of the session and hasn't been talked about enough by a governor, is your expenditure limit bill. Government has been allowed to grow much faster than the private sector for the last 14 years.
Wasn't that tied into one of the taxes, taxes, uh, uh, Mr. Barra?
Yeah, in fact, all, all five of them.
Were tied into the taxes.
And there's a reason for that. Because, because I believe that the membership in the House didn't have a trust in the administration that they would follow through and ask the Senate to support those, those reform measures.
But the amendments on the bills is what they were crying about while they couldn't support it. And that was amazing because they were getting what they wanted. Y'all actually, and, and, and Speaker Barra and Blake knows it pretty well too, I've gotten on you before, and I've gotten on Lance Harris before, and I was getting on y'all a little bit about the session because of excess itemized deductions and stuff, but the amendments were, were, were what y'all wanted because those amendments would make a difference up the road. And I understand that a little better now. But for them to turn around and the governor to accuse you of not being a leader, let me just give you a couple of things. I want you to comment for the break. I'm gonna just share a couple of things with you. The governor went on to say Barra broke a promise he made personally to Edwards, abandoning a tax compromise work with the governor and, uh, Democrats for problems in the House that Barra caused himself during the two weeks the legislative met. Quote, "He is the individual who abandoned his own proposal to me, his own commitment." Barra said, "Then he found fault with the Democrat members, especially members of the Black Caucus." The reason I bring them up is because they were, they were a problem. And it says, "Unfortunately, when the session started two weeks ago, it didn't take long for the Speaker to go back on his work." I want you to comment on that for the break. We'll come back and look at numbers because I think all that's unfair to what's really happened. And I think you can explain it better than anybody. But the governor throwing you under the bus is just, is no call for that.
Well, and, and, and the, the, the going back on, on the word, and it goes back to my original comments when we're talking about, um, framework of what we thought would be a combination, including the reforms and possible revenue that could pass. That, that, that runs the gamut. I mean, there are, there are some, some, certainly some sales tax measures, whether we are removing exemptions from pennies or renewing a portion of the fifth penny, um, tho- those were viable options. You know, the Democrats tend to lean and, and ended up insisting that, you know, something as it relates to personal income tax be, be on, on the agenda. So, it, it ran the gamut of possibilities. What, what I kept telling the governor and, and even members is, it, it doesn't matter. We can put 15 things on the table. We can let 15 different revenue types go to Ways and Means. I think I have a good measure of what will come out of Ways and Means and I certainly have a good feel for what will pass and won't pass on the floor. And I, I, excess itemized, it's a personal income tax change. I told the governor months ago that that was off the table as far as Republicans were concerned. We didn't have the support for that. On the House floor, it would require 53 votes to pass. If he wanted to work with Democrats and find some Republicans to support the bill, that was gonna be his call and his, his, his effort to go pass. The Republicans were not putting that on, on even, even a possibility of passing list. We did not have broad support for that. So, when you, when you talk about going back on your word, the same thing with cleaning of the pennies. He's insisting that we talked about a, a half of the penny rather than a fourth of the penny. We talked for a very short period of time about a half of penny. But when I said, "If you're gonna go to a half of the penny renewal, it's gonna require a dedication to TOPS, some dedication to transportation, there's gonna be some other things that are required." To put a half penny back on the table, you know, worth $440 million, is out of the question without trying to, to zero in. I think you lose Republican support without that dedication. He said, "There's no way I can do that. I don't think the Democrats will support that." We stopped that discussion. So, on the, the first day of Ways and Means, the bill that had a half a penny in it got amended down to a fourth, and we worked from there. In my impression, I'm thinking by the time this went through the process and ended up in the Senate, it might have come back with a half a penny on it. But I think the, the support we had in the House was that he was gonna leave with a fourth of a penny and we possibly had that support going forward. And that's what we worked toward. I don't call that backing up on a deal. That's reality of what can pass in the two chambers.
And by the way, when you look at the sales tax votes, it was two votes. And it, and, and it got walloped. It got 38 votes, but 33 Republicans supported it. Then it got 33 votes and 20 Republicans supported. They had more Republican support than Democrat, yet he's blaming you in the House. Seems like he didn't deliver. He didn't deliver what he needed to deliver. Taylor Barra, Speaker of the House, Representative Blake Megas, when we get back, a lot more to come. Don't go nowhere, folks. You're gonna get the side of the story you need to hear. You're not gonna see it in an advocate hugging that newspaper or Jim Beam piece. We'll be right back. Hi y'all, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. I thought the session went great, as far as I'm concerned, because I think not raising taxes is a good thing. Speaker of the House, Taylor Barra, my special guest, and of course, Representative Blake Megas. We've asked Blake to come in as well. Hey, Taylor, I, I wanna change something up just a little bit. It's a short segment. I do want you to address a little bit about the Black Caucus, because Edwards made the comment, "Then Barra found fault with the Democrat members, especially the Black Caucus." But I remember when the session started, they came up with compressed brackets. I mean, that was supposed to not even been on the table when this thing first started. So, they kinda started off digging in on, on you and the Republicans immediately.
And, and, you know, that, that, that particular item, the compression of personal income tax brackets, um, we, we, in fact, even the governor himself at the Joint Committee on the Budget back on January 19th, when he presented the executive budget, um, in commentary on that day, agreed that compression of brackets as a result of the federal income tax changes was something that he considered probably not a viable option. He admitted that himself. So, you know, on the, on the second or third day of the session, when the Black Caucus approached me about putting that back in the mix, I mean, we had a very frank discussion that that was certainly not an, an option that the Republicans were voting for. And because of the federal tax changes, the governor wouldn't, wouldn't, was agreeing that that wasn't an option as well. And I mean, I understand, this is a negotiation. The, the Caucus for their folks consider that, that sales tax to be regressive, um, you know, on, on their people. Um, throwing that option on the table was certainly, and, and, and I, I keep my door open. I wanted to keep those negotiations going. But that was certainly not an option. And, and I explained to them why. The Fed changes that we're, we're, we, we call it a benefit for 302 million, it's a benefit to solving the, the fiscal issue. But in reality, that's $302 million that our Louisiana taxpayers are gonna pay a little bit more in their state returns as a result of the federal changes. You take that, I would call it a little bit of a penalty on our people, and then add another 440 million of bracket compression penalty to our people, that's a 700-plus million dollar tax increase on personal income taxes.
Speaker Barra, Representative Megas here. Did, I sit on joint budget, and I heard the governor specifically saying, and it surprised us. He said, "Compression of bracket, income tax brackets are off the table." Did you hear the same thing on joint budget?
I did.
All right, hold up, guys. We got it. Watch this. Here it is, right here.
So, that, that's the first I've heard that, but I appreciate that, 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 uh, when, in other words, the document that you released two weeks ago had the compression in it, so that's not something to be considered now.
Well, it's, it's not something that we need to do.
There it is, right there, uh, Mr. Speaker. He's saying right there, no, no way. But yet, you've made the comment the Black Caucus and the governor hadn't been on the same page during the session. That proves it right there. I mean, that, right there proves just about everything. You need to know what happened.
Correct. And, and, and I mean, look, I, I don't fault the Black, the Black Caucus or the Democrats for expressing what they feel they could support and not support. That was, that was not the issue and why we spent the two weeks negotiating back and forth on reasonable options. So, I mean, putting options on the table was part of the negotiation, which going back to our original, my original comments, to, to, for the governor to insist that he and I, only he and I had a deal, you know, to me, left out the rest of the, of, rest of the body, left out the public, and, and I just was not ready to put my name on anything like that. To say that we talked what options were available and where we thought we had support, that I call a framework. I don't call that a deal.
Speaker Barra, it was very clear what options were on the table. Wasn't the conversation piece in the special session about, well, how much we're gonna tax or how much we're gonna cut versus what type of taxes we were gonna pass? I mean, income taxes were off the table early on. Why did the conversation piece change during session? Did the governor not understand that early on in the discussions?
You know, and I, I think, I think as, as he offered support for the, the reform ideas that we had put out there and certainly included them in the call, particularly the three, the three Medicaid efficiency programs, I can understand how that would have caused concern amongst the Democrats. Uh, I mean, I understand that. He, he thought the work requirement, the efficiencies that we were talking about in Medicaid were, were reasonable options to talk through. I mean, we had to get through the components of that, which we did. The, the ending bills that were presented, um, were things that we worked closely with his staff and, and his Department of Health and Hospitals very closely on.
Hey, hey, guys. Mr. Speaker, hold your thoughts. We'll come back. Quick break. You're listening to the Moon Graffon Show. Don't go nowhere, folks. More to come. Hi y'all, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. Session over, regular session starting soon. When does this start, by the way?
Oh, next Monday.
Okay. Blake Megas, I see you're listening to Representative Megas, my special guest, and of course, honored to have him and of course, Speaker of the House, Taylor Barra. Now, you had something we had talked about too.
I wanted the, the speaker to touch on this a little more. We were talking about framework of a, of a potential proposal, different tax options that were on the table, many different budget reform and government reform options that were on the table. Um, and Mr. Speaker, you talked about the framework, and, and something that the listeners can understand easily, you know, it's a $994 million fiscal cliff. You can easily call that a billion dollars. It's very ea- um, easy to understand and, and explain to the listeners. You basically had a compromise on the table of a third, a third, a third. You talked about the Trump, um, you know, the different, um, tax changes, which is about 302 million dollars. There were some sales tax measures in the Dwight bill. That would be another one-third of that, that shortfall. And then the last, and I don't think the governor ever embraced this really.
I never, I never heard this one from the governor's mouth.
Well, this, this last third one was, was cuts, was government efficiencies, was gonna actually cut back the budget, which was very close to what the actual standstill budget would have been last year if we would have adopted the Republicans' plan last year, which was about $274 million. And basically, I know it's give or take $50 million, but that's a third, a third, a third, and that's a solution to the fiscal crisis.
That is correct. And it is what, what our members had talked about even in the fall with our, our retreat, um, even in discussion with some Democratic members, um, as a, as a possible way to look at what that, what that compromise could look like. Let me throw you another couple of, of numbers out there. If you recall, last year, we had a, a proposal and, and, and a plan that, that I think only the, the House Republicans liked at the end of the day, because the Senate didn't get behind it, neither did the governor. And that was to do a standstill budget, withhold about $200 million of appropriations, would have surely put us in a different position that we're in today. But let me, let me fast forward to this year. We finished this year with, on paper, a surplus of, at, at June 30th, um, this past June 30th, a surplus of $153 million.
And that shows that the economy is coming back. You may not see it in our district in Acadiana, but the remainder of the state, the economy is starting to coming back. You're starting to see sales tax proceeds come in. And, um, that's, that's where we're headed. So, you know that, you know, we're on our way coming up in the economy. So, REC is more than likely gonna recognize more money that goes towards melting away the fiscal cliff. Would you not agree?
Yeah. And even if you, even if you consider that 153 million, which has not been spent or nothing has been done with it up to this point. So, if you take the original 994 and you don't spend, so to speak, the 153 million, or you spend it on something that we were gonna incur, I think of the, the 13th Medicaid payment that's been hanging around for a while.
That's been being kicked for year after year after year. That's not fiscally responsible or government to do that. This is the opportunity to, to use it on some expenses that you would in your business or your household. You'd be fiscally responsible. One-time money.
That's correct. And which, which takes 994 and drops it to 841. You apply the federal changes to that, that drops that number to 539. With the 300 million we had in the, in the Dwight bill, that drops that to 239. And you'll hear some talk about 53 million coming from a, a BP payment that'll be part of the discussion in the regular session.
And Mr. Speaker, what about the price of oil? You know, it's, it's in the low 50s is how REC is recognizing that. At some point, I mean, oil's been bumping around in the $60 range. At some point, REC is gonna feel comfortable enough to up their figure, and that could be anywhere from, you know, 40 to 120 million, depending on where they set that number.
That's correct.
The, the fact of the matter is, is that that last third that the governor just couldn't bite off on, it's likely not even gonna be a third of, of the cuts to government. It's likely there's gonna be a bunch of these different things that come into REC, this extra money that's been lying around. And they didn't really have to make cuts to that degree. And, and Speaker, another point I'd like to bring up, if he did have to make some cuts, whether it's 100 million or whether it's $300 million, does it have to be to hospitals? Does it have to be to the waiver program? Specifically, does it have to be to the TOPS program? We've met the constitutional trigger where you can go in 150 to about 350 million. You can touch statutory and constitutional dedications. That is not part of his budget, which kinda tends me to believe that this is a disingenuous budget. It's been put forward in front of Republicans to make the scare tactics to make them vote on more taxes. And that's not what my constituents back home want.
Absolutely. And, and, and if you take last year's budget, and we call it a continuation, and I know that's hard for the public to understand that terminology, but in, in, in numbers, the standstill budget, we would have spent 9.4 billion. That's, that's where the 153 comes in, if you, if you're doing the math. His executive budget is actually at 9.6. So, if, if you're gonna spend the 153, then you do need to look for 994. If you're not gonna spend the 153 and you're gonna use it on a one-time occurrence, I mean, th- th- those are, those are real decisions that need to be made. And they're the fiscal proven ones going forward.
You, you say standstill budget. It's very important for the listeners to understand this. Standstill budget means we're gonna give government the same amount of money to live with this year as it had last year. Imagine having that in, in, in the world today in Acadiana, in your business or your personal life. That's a pretty good deal. Look at local government, how much they've had to cut.
I think that's where the speaker was going. Had we done what we did last year, and you found the 53 million, you said with BP, you'd be able to 200 million. Well, had last year, you left the 200 million, you spent less, your budget would be balanced. I think that's where you were going, right, Speaker?
Absolutely.
And as a result, you, basically you passed the Dwight bill with the Trump money and the standstill budget, and this thing's solved.
Yeah. And, and our sensitivity going into this session, and then I think it's where we had a number of Republicans that had grave concerns about, you know, college students in particular, in March or April, trying to make decisions on, you know, do they borrow money to the school? Will they have their TOPS, um, grant, those kinds of things? So, I think where Republicans were willing to come to the table and say, "Let's consider some revenue, but we certainly don't wanna, uh, uh, put a billion dollars worth of revenue on the table," to let families be able to make those decisions. So, if things had gone as planned and if the governor had done his part garnering his Democrat votes on these, both these reforms and these measures, I think we would have probably seen a different ending, which would have given a little bit better read to our TOPS students and families. But, you know, they dug in. TOPS is not real high on their list from, from a Dem's perspective. But at the same time, now this delays this process even more, puts our families in a, in a difficult spot. And I, I'll go back to the one bill that the Democrats thought was the most important bill to have on the floor, was their excess itemized deduction bill. And Friday morning, right after, right, right, right when we came back from lunch, that bill failed by four votes, and it was four Democratic votes. The bill failed by three votes. With our four votes, that bill would have passed. And it was their
They had it. They could have done it.
Request to put on the table, and they killed it. And, and that's the part that completely changed the session on Friday morning. And, and, and that part of it's a little bit disappointing because the Dwight bill was a very reasonable bill that took away some exemptions, you know, that we've battled over the years with sales tax, and renewed a fourth of a fifth penny, meaning we dropped sales tax about three quarters of a percent. And I, I cannot for the life of me understand why the, the governor would have worked overtime to make sure that bill, the one they wanted on the floor, that Republicans helped get there.
No, no. That, that, that's what I said earlier. Republicans voted more for the bill than Democrats, and the Democrats pulled off of it. The Democrats killed the bill, and yet they're trying to blame you. They're trying to blame you from leadership, which makes no dang sense to me.
The Black Caucus's contention was that the sales tax, that quarter, which would be reduced by three quarters, like you just mentioned, would be a regressive tax that would hit the poor. But it's very important to, to point out to the listeners is that our Constitution exempts groceries, utilities and pharmaceutical, your basic essentials. So, that statement is not correct. I think that business pays half the personal, half, half the sales tax. Um, people pay the other half. But of those people, majority of those are out-of-state tourists or people doing illegal activity. Why shouldn't they have to step up and share the, the weight, just like the middle-class working Louisiana taxpayers do? Everyone needs to pay and needs to be a fair tax system. And I just can't for the life of me understand why they'd be opposed to a quarter penny.
Well, and Blake, on, on, on that same point, if you recall, and I mean, he's, they, they've said it publicly and it's always been part of their, part of their, their, their mission, you know, "We give away too much to business. Business doesn't pay their fair share." You know, "We, we have all these exemptions and credits and business pay their, pay their fair share." Um, Stephen Dwight's bill did exactly that. It put all of the four cents of sales tax uniform as to who got exemptions and who didn't. It, it, it did renew a fourth of the, of the penny. But you were taking away exemptions from, from some business units. I mean, trying to make them all equal where we could. And the, 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 the whole sales tax, whether it's, you know, four or four and a quarter, 50% of that is paid by business. So, I've challenged the Democrats on that in my office one morning, saying, "Wait a minute. You prefer doing brackets and itemized deductions and, and going up on personal income tax, $700 million, instead of what you're usually asking is for us to take away exemptions and make business pay their fair share? And y'all don't wanna support the sales tax? That's what this does. Business is paying 50% of that."
By the way, I, I don't know what you two guys are nervous about, on, if they gotta cut $300 million. The governor cut 672 million and nobody said a word. Nobody said a word, Speaker. Nobody said, "He cut 672 million and not one thing was said." And I, and I, I told him. He, he's a genius if he did that and nobody complained. So, y'all cut 200, 300 million. That's child's play, man. Let's take a break. Uh, we're gonna keep, uh, Mr. Barra just a few more minutes because he's gotta go. Blake Megas, Representative Megas with us as well. You're listening to the Moon Graffon Show. You want some words of wisdom? Listen to me. This might be the last time the Speaker of the House and Representative Megas show up.
I was trying to figure out if that was Blake singing to you.
Oh, man. It's Blake, it's Blake, it's Blake. All right. Thank y'all for being here. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, we got a regular session to go through. I think all the fights ought to be over, and here's what I mean by that. Republicans with the votes in the House and the Senate, and I don't know what Hillary is gonna do, but y'all ought to be able to pass some, if y'all wanted to pass some reform, I think you could pass reform now. Now, you may disagree. It may be so screwed up now, it may not. But I would think you could, you not, don't get in these debates with all these people. Y'all pass what you need to pass and move on. Because really, in this session, everything can be passed with 53 votes. So, if y'all have an agenda, which I hope is a conservative agenda, that's best for Louisiana, forget Republicans, Democrats, black, white, whatever, y'all can really do something in this session with 53 votes to pass some, some reform if you wanted to.
Yeah. The only one that would require 70 if we, if we, and I have it prefilled, um, as we speak for the regular session, would be the, the, the expenditure limit recalculation, because that is into, into the Constitution. Um, so that, that one, and, and, and actually, as we continue to work that through with, with the division and the fiscal office, I think it's in a reasonably good place that everybody agrees it's a better, um, calculation going forward. And the whole point of that was, you know, just fiscal discipline, that if you're gonna bump your head up against the, the expenditure limit every now and then, you're gonna have to, you know, be careful what you do with wish lists and requests when, right now, it's such an irrelevant number. It's 2 billion above what we have in revenue, so it's a useless number at this point. But that one would require 70 votes.
What about, what about the Louisiana checkbook, based on Ohio checkbook that passed, tell me if I'm wrong, 104 to nothing? That the Senate, you know, they keep talking about all these bills. I didn't see the Senate pick that up and run with it and get it out. So, now that's gotta, I, I've taken it. pick that up and run with it and get it out. So now that's got, I've taken it, has to start back all over again. But I think that's a bill that needs to pass in this session.
Yeah. We also have that one prefilled for the regular. Senator Rick Ward had a version of it on the Senate side. I have not sat with those two bills and reconciled them completely, but I will certainly be visiting with Senator Ward to see where the likenesses are. I mean, the Division Administration has to run this transparency site, and Commissioner Dorton and I have talked at length about it. I think we had our bill in a good place that the Commissioner was comfortable with, and his IT staff has already begun that work. So I think that one will be pretty easy to put back in place.
Well, I want it put back in place. All right. Because I know you got to go and you got a meeting, and Blake will keep you around. If you had to sum up all this stuff that y'all been going through and been taking place, what would you want the voters to know? Because, I mean, I know the governor's out there beating on you with the press. He's going all over the place beating on you like it's your fault, yet if they knew the truth and they listened to the program today, they'll find out that that was not the truth, is what he's saying. The Democrats actually killed a lot of bills, including excess itemized deductions. So what would you like to tell the voters to really look at and concentrate on? Because they're going to be unfair to you, as you know, and the press will as well.
Certainly. And I think, I think as you, you know, go back to the original call that was made for the session, it included the reform items, it included a large menu of potential revenue items, knowing that some of those weren't going to make it out of the committee. But at the end of the day, my recommendation on how we proceed through this was, if we had an opportunity to lower the state sales tax, granted, it was temporary, it was put on in 2016, but we, as the economy improves, we work our way down through that. We were taking that down by three quarters of a penny. That's goodness for Louisiana. At the same time, if we got these reforms passed, you have a Medicaid program that was expanded by executive order. The legislature did not make that decision.
And boy, has it been expanded.
And we were trying to introduce three components that would have given us some efficiency. We weren't trying to undo anything. You know, the goal was not necessarily to throw people off of Medicaid. The goal was to make it more efficient from an eligibility perspective, through the work requirement, helping people to get better educated, possibly develop a career. And at the end of the day, you end up lowering folks' taxes, you get reforms for the future, and if you had to cut the balance of that money, whether it's 150, 200, or 250 million, you have 20 agencies you spread that across, and you, that's what the appropriations process is for. He criticizes us every day, put your name next to the cuts. And I said, Governor, when we send you House Bill 1 at the end of the regular session every year, if we are missing 200 million dollars and can't fund it, that's when we put our names to the cuts. Those are the areas that we think don't need to be funded as a priority, and that's our names next to the cut. I mean, that's how this process works. So I think if we have the opportunity to lower sales tax, build some reforms that help us prevent future fiscal cliffs, and at the same time have to cut the budget, I mean, that's the most conservative, fair approach that we could have given Louisiana. And I'm disappointed that him not being able to garner the Democrat's support to pull us over the finish line was what cratered the session. And I'm still focused. I'm not giving up. My blinders are on. I'm trying to, you know, not look at the detractors. Because there's a way to fix this and fix it conservatively.
Well, I just want you to know, I think you got a lot of support on what happened and what you did. Don't read the press clippings. Republicans, and you're a Republican, they kind of get tied into what the press is saying about them. Trust me. Those people don't know sheep booo from Wild Honey, and they never will. So you may as well don't even worry about them. Go ahead.
Mr. Speaker, Representative Megas here. So we've got 302 million dollars that's probably going to be recognized here soon by REC. So the governor's got to take another look at that budget that he called a devastating budget. He says he supports the TOPS program. I support the TOPS program as a TOPS kid myself in the second class. Do you think the governor takes that 302 million dollars and recommends to the legislature that we appropriate it all towards TOPS, because it would fully fund the TOPS program, giving those kids the opportunity to prepare for the next semester? I know that I would support that. Will the governor do that? What's your opinion on it?
I would think that would probably not be where he goes with that 302 million.
No, I don't know. I think he wants, I think he wants the TOPS program to be a political point. Hey, Speaker, I know you have to go. You had something you had to go do. Once again, always a pleasure. Let's do it again very, very soon. And we'll watch and see what they say, but I just can't believe they're throwing you under the bus like that. There's no reason for that at all. When they made the bad votes, you didn't.
Look, when we elected an independent Speaker back in 2016, I have been climbing out from under the bus ever since January 11, 2016. So I'm used to it now.
You remind me a little bit of George Bush, the SW, when he won election, and they had a long time before they can decide who won it, and the left made him illegitimate president. They're kind of doing that with you because they don't like the way you won it. But anyway, listen, we got to go, and thank you so much.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for having me. And Blake, thank you for your assistance. Appreciate you being on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker of House. Taylor, by the way, Blake, if you look at what the governor really went hard at him yesterday. The governor went hard at him big time. I read some of the things, broke promises, didn't hold up to his end of the bargain. That's not what's happened, and I knew enough inside and watched it from a distance. That's not what happened. The Black Caucus, which is the heart and soul of the Democrat Party, got to understand that, they decided not to pass the excess itemized deduction. I'm glad they didn't. Because I thought that was the one thing we messed up on, but we got lucky. They could have passed it. They decided not to vote for it. Then they came back the last day and they wanted to vote on that first, and then the sales tax. Well, you knew what that was about. And I was glad the Speaker and everybody held.
When you go back and forth like that, and you go into a deal, back out of a deal, into a proposal, back out of a proposal, you lose the trust of the other members. Believe me, there's no Republican there, well, not many, the majority that does not want to raise taxes on people back home. But you're asking them for a little bit of compromise, and then when they actually can find a little bit of compromise and they come across, and you don't follow through with your end of the deal, your end of the bargain and come through, then you're going to have some real issues. And it's going to make this next session more contentious, and it's going to make the next special session, if called, a lot more contentious.
But think about it, too, is that the governor called a special session. The governor claims he put everything in Taylor wanted, but the governor failed in a special session. Nobody calls a special session without having the votes.
That's right.
Nobody calls a special. He failed. He called it. I'm starting to wonder if they did it on purpose, because they knew the press and the media would go after Taylor and the Republicans.
Moon, this governor's never been the best at county votes, and he hasn't been the best since we've seen the Speaker's race, obviously.
Maybe he's using common core math. All right, we got to take a break. We'll be right back. You're listening to the Moon Graffon Show. Be right back, folks. A lot more to go. We just cranked up here. Hi, y'all. Welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline if you'd like to be part of the program. Appreciate the Speaker joining with us early, almost a whole hour. Blake Megas, I invited Blake to come on as well. I'm glad he came by, and he's still with us for a few more minutes. I wanted to hold him over, talk about a few things. I mean, you were down there, you were watching all this. Speaker may not want to touch upon it. I hope you will. The Democrat, the heart and soul of the Democrat Party is the Black Caucus.
That's right.
I mean, look, just, it's not ugly, it's not racial, this is the fact. It's the Black Caucus. They started from first day in the session when they started talking about compressed brackets. They wouldn't vote for a sales tax with these good amendments on there. I know the governor had made the comment, and I think I can go back and pull this way. He said, you know, he might can handle a half cent sales tax if that's what people want to negotiate. So, you know, there was a lot of misnomer between believing that House Republicans were breaking down, because the press only puts the most liberal Republicans, I give you Nancy Pelosi, I'm sorry, Julie Stokes. I get them confused, Blake, I'm sorry. People like that, Barry Ivey, who these, Rob Chadwa, who, by the way, that's the biggest joke of all. These people are Republicans, and the press goes get their comments. And they make all the bad comments against the Republicans. Now, you know what I mean. They make these comments, but the Black Caucus was never in sync with the governor on votes. And I think the vote on Friday that lost 50 to 51, which has to do with excess itemized deduction, that was their vote. They had four of them, didn't even vote. They had a chance to pass that, and they didn't pass it.
You know, your first point, you were talking about the actual numbers, and, you know, John Couvier, who's a poster around Louisiana, he did a great write-up on this. 2008, there's around over 1 million white Democrats in the state of Louisiana. That number's gone down to about 500,000 10 years later. And we have about 4.9 million residents in Louisiana.
And by the way, that number you're using, Democrats like my dad, who's not here anymore, he just never was going to change his party. He voted Republican all the time.
And you see some growth in the Republican Party, still very strong, but the most, the biggest growth is the no party. I mean, that's, they've decided.
Thank you. By the way, we pushing it.
That's your party, huh, man?
That's me and Brandon's party. But go ahead, make your point.
But that's what I was bringing up. And what was your second question, Moon?
It was just that the, then the press and the media goes interview. I don't see your name a lot.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
They go to Julie, Nancy Stokes, whatever I call her. They go to these Republicans who are like buddies with the governor and the Democrats. And matter of fact, Stokes is a great example. Gets up on the floor, rails and rails and rails, and in the sales tax vote the other day, they had one person that didn't vote, and she was there. She was her. She didn't even vote.
Moon, it's got to be some kind of mistake, because I saw her. She made comments on the floor. She asked questions on the bill. I saw her in the chamber. And House rules say that you must vote when you're in the chamber.
I'm glad you said that, because I was getting ready to ask. What does House rules say if you're in the chamber?
If you're in the chamber, you must record a vote.
Julie's there. You saw her there. She spoke on the floor, but didn't vote. Boy, I tell you what, that's who we need to run for another office. I get frustrated with Republicans. And by the way, Blake, I get frustrated Republicans like that, because, and the reason I ask you that is they're throwing y'all under the bus instead of working with y'all.
Well, and you get the comments from, I mean, I won't go into names, specific names, but some of these different Republicans that make these comments. But, you know, you get the governor's comments, and if it's a budget issue, the first person you need to go to is the chairman of the committee. We need to hear what Cameron Henry has to say about a budget issue. If it's a, and it's not a Republican-Democrat thing, if it's a tax issue, I want to hear from Neil Abramson. You should go to your chairman's first, find out what they have to say, then maybe go to your different caucus leaders. We've got Gene Reynolds in the Democratic Party. We've got Lance Harris in the Republican Party. Those are the guys that can speak for the delegation. Some of these, some of these members, like you mentioned earlier, not to go into names, are minorities in the Republican Party. We still have a lot of strong conservatives in our caucus, and they don't speak for us.
I know, but they make, because the press runs, I guarantee you, Jim Beam, every article he does, Jim Beam's going to have six quotes from Republicans, and every one of them don't represent not one conservative. And by the way, Bernie Pinson and them had some polls on it. We shared them on the program in the last year or two. It's like 92% of Republicans don't want higher taxes. 75% of everybody don't want higher taxes. Why would you go down and raise taxes?
Oh, you're exactly right, Moon. It makes no sense to me. Maybe some of these legislators are not spending enough time in their districts, and I hope they get go home and get out of the fog and the haze in Baton Rouge, and just go to a supper. Go to a few different events in your district and meet some of your constituents, and ask them how they feel about tax increases. They are tired of paying more taxes, especially in the Akadena area that's been depressed by this economy.
I'll make a deal with all those Republicans that I'm talking about, the ones that are really liberal. I'll go to the meeting with them. I'll bring their voting record. And so I'll be the scorekeeper. Okay? When they ask the question to, you know, Nancy Pelosi, Julie Stokes, or they ask the question to anybody else, I'll sit there and say, okay, let me tell you how they voted on this. Let me tell you Julie Stokes is in the House and she didn't vote on that. But she voted on this, she voted on that. And give them all their voting record, and then say, okay, any questions for Julie? And they're going to go. Julie Stokes will probably get them to walk out. By the way, she would walk out because I'm giving her voting record, which doesn't make any sense. Your voting record is who y'all, Blake. You know that. You know that. And you're very conservative, and you've not, you've not been suckered into that. You didn't vote for the one cent sales tax.
Well, when you run for office, and I had to actually go door to door and shake people's hands and have them look into my heart and look into my eyes and see who I am as a man, as a candidate, I made a promise to those people. I'm not going to break my promise to my constituents. Because when you arrive in Baton Rouge, you have a choice to make. You can represent government, or you can represent the people in your district. It was a very easy choice for me. I wanted to represent the people in my district because the taxpayers in Louisiana, they don't have a voice in Baton Rouge anymore, and they need a voice. And I encourage everyone out there that's actually voting, when term limits come around and you see these elections, and you're looking at these different candidates, pick a candidate that has the same principles and the same values as you, because they are your only voice at the Capitol, because the bureaucrats won't speak for you.
And there's one other thing you have to do. You have to follow up the next election. Did they stick to what they said they were going to do? And the reason you know if they did or not is look at their voting record. Because if their voting record doesn't line up with their mouth and what they said, then they're not, that's the person you need to beat. I think if more candidates would get beat, it would send a message to a lot of people, hey, I better do what I said these people wanted me to do.
You know, we were talking earlier about this.
Could you imagine going to an event, and they said, Blake, I'm there. Hey, Blake, I'm a constituent. By the way, Blake, I noticed you voted for one, two, three, five new taxes. Here's the tax. You voted for a billion dollars in new taxes, Blake. Now, Blake, I also went back and looked at your, when you ran, you told me that's not what you're going to do. Well, Blake, I got you. You're going to say, but first of all, I'm not going to give anybody back.
You can't defend that. You can't defend that if you made a promise. Now, if you ran and said, look, I'm for growing government, I want to raise people's taxes, and they elect you, then hey, go up there and represent your people. But I got a feeling that the people back home don't believe that. And they're not electing these type of legislators.
I know, but how many candidates have now become Republicans only to win? We got a bunch of them. And I think we're seeing a bunch of them, without mentioning names, popping up on a daily basis. That's my frustration.
Let's go back and let's talk a little bit. You were bringing it up earlier, and we didn't hit on it enough. The Speaker worked very hard. Our Republican delegation leader, Lance Harris, worked very hard. And they were talking with the governor, and, you know, they were looking at framework and a proposal. And is it the Speaker's job or the Republican delegation leader's job to go get Democrat votes? Or is it the governor's job to do that?
The governor's.
The governor's job.
In this case, it's his party.
So how can you blame House Speaker for not getting the votes when you had more Republicans voting on the sales tax measure than Democrats? It was the fact that the Black Caucus has probably, is in disagreement with the governor. I've heard a lot of them mention, they're just tired of getting that call at the last minute and being expected that you're just going to go along because I'm the governor. They want...
I wrote it down. Okay? The first time the sales tax came up, okay, this was Dwight's bill. It was, it was a, the yes side got 38 votes. 33 of them were Republicans. Okay? The second time it got voted, it got 33 votes. It got less votes, okay? 20 were Republicans. And if you look at the itemized deductions, the excess itemized deductions, which was a 50 to 51 vote, Republicans and Democrats split on that, or maybe a little bit more Republican than Democrat. Now, I got to tell you, that's not the Republicans not trying to do something.
That's the Republicans compromising.
That's compromising Republicans. I agree. I totally disagree on itemize. You know that.
I can tell you that all those Republicans that supported that had to hold their nose to support it, because they did not want to raise any taxes back home. But they did it in the ideas of compromise. There were some amendments made to make these taxes temporary, to make them palatable, and not make them permanent. And they held their nose and they did it. Where were the Democrats?
Well, the Democrats, but that's why the governor has, he's shooting himself in the foot with no credibility. By going after Barrow, Barrow wasn't honest. Barrow went around the back. Barrow didn't do any of that. Matter of fact, I said it on that, Brandon Abach, I'm disappointed in Barrow and Lance a couple of times, because I thought they were trying to, that should have never got out of committee. Okay? Then it got out of committee, and I said it would pass. And I was real disappointed. They allowed it to happen.
Well, it shows you, that's, in the spirit, in the spirit of compromise, we compromise. It was just like the debate that we had roughly a year ago on whether we should tap the Budget Stabilization Fund, the rainy day fund. You go to the governor and you ask him, okay, he wants all of it. You tell him, we'll give you a little bit, in the spirit of compromise. He says, no, you give him a little bit more. He says, no, you give him a little bit more. At some point, you're negotiating against yourself, and you just got to do, like, you know that little pretty blond-headed girl with the blue eyes on the Frozen video? You know the Disney movie? She sings that little song, Let It Go, Let It Go? You just got to let it go and say, if you can't deal with this, then walk away from the table, because all you're doing is reinforcing bad behavior.
But they said, the governor called a special session. He wrote up the ruse, and he presented it. Then he blamed Taylor for writing a special session. I listened, I did everything he wanted to do, but he forgot to do one thing. He forgot to bring his votes to the party. He didn't bring his votes. He didn't show up.
He took his own, a faction of his own party for granted, and they said no.
Yeah.
They said no, Moon. And as a result, nothing comes out of the special session, and the conversation is now, how much are we going to cut government? And look, I'm ready to go to work in the appropriations committee and point out those cuts, and we're going to fully fund TOPS.
Well, government, the governor cut 672 million dollars, and nobody said a word. How did he do that?
Because it didn't happen.
Because he didn't happen. Just take a break. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. We'll be right back. I guess we won't be eating shrimp anytime soon, huh? Inside joke, folks, inside joke. I told you how the ratings would go up on this program. We would play what's set off there, instead of what we're playing on there. I promise. And by the way, it's nothing dirty. It's just all info. All right, 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Blake Megas, Representative Megas, my special. First of all, thanks for[1756.88] most special, first of all, thanks for all your votes, I do think you're voting right, uh, wish we can get the rest of them to vote that way, uh, Blake, you know, you, you got this regular session, I think it is a time Republicans, if you wanna really set some, some reform up, most reform is gonna take fifty-three votes, not all, but most of it, why not find the things you wanna do and tell the Republicans, that's what we're gonna do, guys, let's, let's hang together and do this, because, because you can do it, and you don't have to negotiate with the Democrats on it, the good government measures, let's get them done this session, because it's, we, I know they're gonna talk budget, but they can't talk tax increases.
You know, you, some of the revenue measures that the speaker mentioned earlier, he had put them in a letter to the governor, we still stand for all those, those reform measures, excuse me, reform measures, we still stand for all of them, and I, and I know that those things are gonna be offered in the regular session, the Democrats ask, why don't you bring in the regular session, well, it's because we wanted to bring in as early as possible in the special session and tie it all to the, to all the revenues, because we're fearful that we won't get bipartisan support if we bring it into the regular, but we're gonna bring it anyway, because those things make sense, expenditure limits make sense, Louisiana checkbook transparency websites make sense, Medicaid reforms make sense.
That Louisiana checkbook was a hundred and four to zero in the House.
So that should, that should fly out in the regular session.
By the way, just cause I'm curious, couldn't John Alario, the Senate President, took that bill, put it on the committee, ran it through and voted and got it passed, or it would have been, it wouldn't have worked because the session didn't finish.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to ask the speaker on how he tied those different items together, it still may have been tied to the revenue measures, so when the revenue failed, every, all of those measures failed as well.
Okay, so was it amendment, I mean, I didn't think it was amendment, I thought it was stood by itself, maybe it did.
No, we, we had, it was, it was all tied together because, um, Republicans wanted reform, and they wouldn't raise any revenue without reform, but I think Republicans still stand for all those same things, and I don't think any Republican is gonna vote for any type of tax increase without seeing those reforms in place, so either the reforms are gonna go in place this regular session, or they're gonna go in place in the next special if one is called, and it's gonna be the same conversation piece, Moon, the decision was between whether you wanna raise taxes, or you wanna cut government, it was never between whether we should raise income tax, or whether we should raise sales tax, the conversations were made a long time ago, the, the framework was done, there were, the speaker went to the governor and told him what items he thought that would be palatable with Republicans, and what they would have to see in the measures of reforms in order to pass those items, that's the only way you're getting those tax votes.
Yeah.
Without those items, the Republicans don't wanna support these, these measures without reform, because they don't wanna show up and be in the same predicament two years from now, four years from now in their next term, talking about the same matters, and being threatened that the TOPPS program's gonna be shut down.
Yeah.
Prisoners are gonna be let out of jail, um, waiver, disability children are gonna be put out in the street.
Well, you know.
It's the same broken record and the same scare tactics, and we're fed up with it in the legislature.
The Ways and Means could have shut down some stuff, and I remember the press, with eleven, seven vote Republicans, I remember the press was calling the Ways to Be Mean Committee, and I thought, that's when I got mad, I said, y'all letting the press determine what you're voting for, that's what they were calling it, Jeremy Offord had a piece, the Ways to Be Mean.
These legislators.
Ways to Be Mean means if you don't vote for taxes, you are mean, no account, mammy eating, mother, father, sister, brother, that's what they're telling you.
These legislatures don't, don't represent the media, they don't present, represent the bureaucrats in government, they represent the constituents back home, they're voting against taxes because the constituents back home are tired of paying increased taxes, when they're looking at where their dollars are being spent, they're being spent in a wasteful manner, and it's not transparent, if they want more money from the people back home, they need to first cut back on the government, look for efficiencies, look for budget reforms, and show, build some trust back in their constituents, before you could ever ask for another penny of revenue.
I think it's amazing, TOPPS has affected a lot of people in a lot of positive ways, but it's the one thing the governor and the left has, uh, uh, grabbed that and put that as a political football, kids' futures, without migration problem, with people leaving, young best and brightest leaving for jobs, to take that and put that as a political football, to me is shameful on the governor's.
Moon, mark my word, when appropriations committee that I sit on figures out a way to fully fund TOPPS with the money that's coming in, and we send that to the House floor, there will be an amendment from Democrats to take the money and put it back into LDH, the TOPPS program costs around three hundred million dollars, LDH is receiving about fourteen, what, fourteen billion? Or some ridiculous billion, I don't have the number in front of me.
I don't think it's fourteen, but it's a lot.
No, it's not fourteen, excuse me, that's, that's, it's a lot of money, Moon, I was wrong, it's a lot of money, it's billions and billions, it's seven to nine billion dollars, so, you, when you're telling me that they can't afford to lose two hundred and fifty million to go towards kids' future, that they're gonna take that money and send it over to LDH, and it's, it's the black hole of our budget, healthcare is about half of our budget, it just keeps sucking all the air out of the room.
The governor decided to do that, and, and they keep talking about the money to get from the federal government, I think most of the time it's three to one or two to one matching, I mean, you gotta put up a billion to get three billion.
That's right.
You know, you know, you know what I'm saying, and, and, and that's eating up money that could go to something else.
But if you, if you, if you have that philosophy, and you're saying, well, we're losing federal money, that if you understand that philosophy, then, then in that case, you would take all of your money and you put it into LDH because you can match and get more money, when is enough enough?
Yeah, good point, all right, Representative Blake McGas, thanks Blake, we'll do it again.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you having me, and I thank you for all the listeners out there, call your legislators, let them know how you feel about these, um, tax measures, and, um, make sure they hear from you, and thank, thank you for being involved in the political process.
All right, guys, gotta take a quick break, more of the Moon Graffon Show, doggone away, we're not done yet.
Yeah, I missed that number, it feels like.
How y'all, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us, eight four four seven six 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 oh seven, Hickson has a hotline, if you'd like to be part of the program, it's your opportunity to be a voice, all right, Blake gone, and, uh, appreciate Blake stopping by a little while and visiting with us, and of course, we had the Speaker of the House Barra, who by the way, the governor yesterday just tore into him, as he was the only guy, the bad guy lying, you know, the governor shouldn't make the comments that he made, but he did, he did, he had to make those comments, he had to go after, uh, uh, the Speaker of the House, and I want to say it again, I was almost getting disappointed in the Republican leadership, because I thought they were giving away too much, and they did try to give away too much, but it was the black caucus, which is the heart and soul of the Democrat Party, just call it what it is, they're the ones that screwed this thing all up for them, can you imagine, they had to vote on House Bill Eight, which is the raise income taxes on people that atomize, which by the way, has already been done, because the way Louisiana's set up, when Trump gave us the tax cut, guess what, the state government took three hundred and two million right off the top out of your pocket and mine, instead of us having it in our pocket, we're getting ready to pay the state of Louisiana, so they were gonna add another eighty million dollars, and that, and that, that was the one I told y'all about that came out of the Ways and Means Committee, that won ten to seven to come out, and we had eleven to seven Republican majority, now I've also heard since then from people last night, that that committee will never let that out again, ever, and I'm holding it to them, they did that trying to reach out to the governor, now for the governor to nut up, for the governor to nut up and go on town throwing Barra under the bus, saying things that he has no clue he said, the governor went to say that Barra broke a promise he made personally to Edwards, banning the tax compromise worked out, and the governor incriminated Democrats for problems in the House that Barra calls himself during the two weeks that the legislature met, he's the individual who abandoned his own proposal to me, and his own commitment on the very first day, then he found fault with the Democratic members, especially members of the black caucus, I know for a fact, the black caucus was the problem, the governor, the, the governor doesn't say is what kind of promises he made, he doesn't talk about the promises he made, by the way, did, I don't know this, nobody told me, but did the governor count the black caucus as already voting his way because he's the governor, when the black caucus turned this whole thing into a joke, did the governor, I'm not, I don't know, but did the governor promise, did the governor promise he could deliver to black caucus and the black caucus said, to hell with you, you realize, they lose fifty fifty-one on an excess itemized deduction, which is an income tax increase on anybody that itemized, that's me and you, most forty-five, forty-eight percent of the people are itemized, not twenty percent of tax files, forty-five percent of taxpayers is a big difference, so, they had a chance, all they had to do was get these four black caucus members to vote for it, and it would have won fifty-four, it had won fifty-four fifty-one, now by then Broadwater was still there, Brandon, it would have won fifty-four fifty-one, which is, if you add that up, that's a hundred and five, and that's how many representatives you had, then Broad, Broadwater left, he was the liberal, 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 liberal Democrat from Hammond, who by the way, took a government job, so he wasn't there anymore, that was one vote they were counting on to cross from the Republican side, and then, and then Edwards says, fortunately, when sessions started two weeks ago, it didn't take long for the speaker to go back on his word the very first day, the very first day is when the black caucus started their crap, the black caucus shut this down, don't listen to anybody in the paper, don't listen to black caucus blaming the House leadership, House leadership, you know why, here's what they want, folks, they want a coup, they want a coup, they want Barra gone as Speaker of the House, and the only way it can happen is every Democrat and mu, uh, some Republicans vote against Barra to get him out of there, how would you like to be the Republican that would vote Barra out of there, by the way, Julie Stokes, Nancy Pelosi of the legislature, Nancy Pelosi of the state, Julie Stokes, who by the way is a Republican, so she can win, same thing as Rob Shad, I ain't raising taxes, Brandon, you ever seen anybody vote for any more taxes than him? I hope somebody's running against him, your, his voting record was sending him to hell in a handbasket, politically speaking, Nancy Ju, Julie Nancy Pelosi, Pelosi Stokes, Ms. Nancy Pelosi Stokes, folks, she, she met with the governor's people, she railed for the governor, she was the spokesman for the governor, and she's a Republican, Nancy Pelosi Stokes, Julie Stokes, was waylaying against the sales tax, I mean, how to pass it, we gotta pass this, waylaying against the Republicans on the House floor, just beating them up like a bunch of dogs, and then the vote came, and the vote was, I think, seventy-one thirty-three, Brandon, okay, there was only one legislator, one out of a hundred and four, cause remember Broadwater's already took his government job, there's only one out of the hundred and four that did not cast a vote, and her name is Nancy Pelosi, I'm Julie Stokes, I'm gonna get them confused, Brandon, but I mean, they are who they are, Nancy, Julie Stokes ran and raved and went all over the House and dog Republicans, and in the meantime, she didn't even vote, I mean, what a joke, by the way, the rumor, and I don't know what's gonna happen with Tom Shadler, Secretary of State, or if anything will happen, I don't know the whole story, that's two sides to every story, somebody told me one time, it's two sides to a pancake, but if Shadler was for whatever reason would leave, and I don't know anything about it, I'm waiting to see if, I don't know if he has to leave, they, the Democrats, Jay Darn and Edwards are trying to get her to be the next Secretary of State, and I want everybody to remember Nancy Pelosi's, I mean, Julie Stokes' name, Nancy Sto, Julie St, Nancy, I'm messing it up now, Julie Stokes is a Democrat, a dressed up Democrat, and with a voting record from hell, and all she's ever done is work with Bill Edwards, and that reminds me, five special sessions, Brandon, we've gone through two regular, we're getting ready to go through the third regular, and a sixth special session, can anybody tell me what else John Bell Edwards, the governor and co-governor Jay Darn, can anybody tell me what they've tried to accomplish in the first seven sessions, eight, nine sessions after this, after this, when we get past these regular and specials, that'd be nine sessions, can anybody tell me what he's tried to fix or accomplished as the governor of the state of Louisiana, and the answer is not one dang thing, he has tried, tried to raise taxes on everybody anytime he could, if they would have gave John, if they would have made a deal with John Bell Edwards, look, we're gonna raise income taxes by a billion, we're gonna raise sales taxes by a billion, will you be happy with that, he would have went, oh yeah, baby, bring it on, John Bell Edwards would have been more than glad to sign on his desk two billion dollars in tax increases, which by the way, he already has, he would do it again, permanent taxes, he wouldn't be mad, mad at him at all, cause I'm gonna tell you, the only thing I see is a guy that's on a tax revenge against middle and working class people, he is on taking as much money out of your pocket as he possibly can, that should not ever be allowed to happen, and that's why when people voted for him, it felt like they fell off my chair, all he's talked about, it would be, we got seven sessions out the way, we got one, two more getting ready to come, it'd be nine sessions, and John Bell Edwards only wants to take money out of the working class and the working people's pockets, that, my friend, has gotta stop, and there's only one way to stop him, is vote him and Jay Darn out next time, I got an open line for you, eight four four seven six 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 oh seven, Hickson has a hotline, your comments are welcome, we'll be right back. How y'all, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us, eight four four seven six 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 oh seven, Hickson has a hotline, if you'd like to be part of the program, your opportunity to be the voice, alrighty, uh, by the way, just some other stuff and headlines, Tyler Bridges, our friend from Bolivia, uh, who lives here about half the time, is Press Secretary for Governor Bill Edwards, Washington style gridlock, Louisiana House's special session collapsed, it's not Washington style politics here, folks, you got somebody who wants to raise taxes every step of the way, well, guess who's the person that made this comment, we're moving to be like Washington, John Alario said in an interview, it happened in the past decade, we're moving to more partisan, our group pushes so much to others, says, wait a minute, we gotta stand up too, it becomes a loggerhead, and everybody stops, John Alario, now, here's our choice, uh, we're fighting now, or we can go back to the days where John Alario made all the ruse and end up last and everything like we are now, John Alario has to be stopped, absolutely has to be stopped, Senator Francis DeFei Thompson, who's been around the second longest serving Senator, uh, or, or legislator, I think Alario has forty-six years, DeFei has forty-four, Brandon, I have never seen this go on, never did we not get along, oh, well, we didn't raise taxes in the fees this time, that's, that's, that's what we did, we raised taxes and fees, gee whiz, so anyway, uh, they can call it, they can call it what they want to, uh, Washington press has come here, not Washington politics, the way they cover stuff has come from Washington, all right, we're gonna jump gears, my good brother Lance Strudles, how you doing, my brother?
How's it going?
Well, it's that time of year, man, I'm doing great, how about yourself?
Doing good, it is that time of year.
All right, tell them what we got going, of course, people know that, uh, my little girl Maddie is, uh, at St. Thomas More, you know, I don't know if you noticed, and I, this is our fourth year there already.
Time's passing.
She has a semester, finishing the semester and next year.
It seems like she just got there, but looking at how gray your hair is, I guess it has been four years.
Nice. Yeah, yeah, nice, you want me to talk about his no hair, all right, y'all wanna get into this, really?
I shouldn't have started.
And then when Lance goes, I'm gonna get him for what, weeks and months after the run, Lance is gone, I forgot about that.
That was poor strategy on my part.
No, it is getting gray, by the way, I was gonna blame Brandon, by the way, I didn't have no gray when I met my wife, believe me, I didn't say that word, I'm not, I, I didn't say that word, I just said no gray, I show you the picture.
You just did what I did, you shouldn't have gone there.
She's, she's working. All right, Lance, of course, options program, Hope Fest, Hope Fest, uh, run is up, talk about what's coming up on Saturday, cause I know you're looking for runners, and I wanted you to come by and visit, tell us what's going on.
Well, thank you, Moon and Brandon, I'm happy to be here, it's that time of year again, the Hope Fest five K, uh, race and buddy walk is this Saturday, March tenth, uh, it kicks off at eight AM in Town Square in River Ranch, right here in Lafayette, uh, it's a beautiful route through that really pretty neighborhood, and, uh, all the proceeds go to the STM options program, which helps your daughter and her friends.
Yeah, but I want you to talk about the race a little bit, because, uh, I know you're looking for a certain number, we need to get to a certain number, and we ask it people, boy, if you're a group and you wanna get in a race, because your race is, uh, is certified, I don't know if that's what you call it.
It is, yeah, it's a, it's a professionally timed five K, it's chip time, so it's a, like any other professionally timed race.
Somebody that's working on a race in a few weeks, they wanna see where they at, or they working on a race in a week or two, they can come and they qualify, because you said, talk about the chip time, what does that mean?
So, uh, we work with CajunTiming.com, they're a professional, uh, you know, race company, they do all of the online stuff for us, and, uh, you show up at Hope Fest five K this Saturday, and, uh, you know, you'll, you'll have a little computer chip in your bib number, you start off and, uh, you know, a little pad on the road will start your clock, and when you cross that pad on the finish line, in record time for you, you know, you, uh, that, that computer will stop, and, and that's all professionally timed.
They laugh at me every year, Brandon, cause I drive it with my truck, I make record time, actually, I got a ticket, but, uh, no, it's, it's a big race, but if people would realize, I know you're still probably looking for probably another hundred people or sort of run, and it's, and not too late to sign up now, and the proceeds, like you say, they go to the benefit the options program, which are kids like my daughter.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they've, they've kids of all shape, that's what's great about the options program, they're kids of all shape and different forms, I call them, they just, they're different, but they're not, they're somebody's kid, but on the flip side, they have some needs, and this is what the options program has helped provide, I know for us.
Absolutely, the options program, uh, and, and the proceeds from Hope Fest five K and Hope Fest help the options program, uh, provide the necessary resources for the, uh, the education that's tailored for our option students who have special needs in the classroom.
Well, you gotta have, you gotta have a certain amount of teachers, I mean, it, it takes a lot of money to do that, we pay our share, but y'all always trying to raise money for it as well, okay, before we talk a bit more about this, somebody wants to donate, donate money, I know it was twenty-five dollars to run, correct?
It's twenty-five dollars to register online at CajunTiming.com, so, that's what we wanna do, we wanna push your listeners to join us, register to run.
Say it again?
CajunTiming.com.
Now, if somebody wants to call and put money in somebody's name, can they do that? Tell us how that works for anything like that.
Yep, you can go to STMcougars.net slash Hope Fest and there on that, uh, website, you'll see a donate button, click that donate button. You, uh, you contribute whatever amount you wanna contribute to and if you wanna make it in memory of or on behalf of somebody, you can put that in there.
I know, I know Tanya went to Facebook and had a lot of people for us that just gave money, and I go run.
That's right.
But, but really in the bottom line for y'all is raising the money, the race is to draw people in.
That's right, that's right.
And people that wanna compete and race, so somebody's going to Rose, man, I wanna run in that, they need, I don't care if you're listening in Shreveport or Monroe, come down here, it's all certified, it's got everything you need to run and it's a neat event, it's right there in the heart of Lafayette, it's a neat area y'all running in, it's.
Gorgeous, gorgeous.
I don't run, but I, I do walk it every year. But, uh, I, I was just mentioning that because somebody may know somebody else that's in the options program. Or maybe they wanna run, like, you know, I had my dad die and, and I think some people gave some money to STM and options program in memory of my dad.
That's right.
I'm saying how you can do it. There may be somebody today listening in Alexandria, Louisiana goes, you know, I went to STM and I remember them having that program, anything like that, so.
Or just friends of the special needs community, uh, that, that wanna help, uh, this group of young people, um, you know, the whole fitness community, anybody. We're, we're inviting anybody and everybody to help support us, uh, CajunTiming.com is where you can pre-register. Uh, we do have walk-up registrations, you save five dollars if you pre-register, it's twenty-five dollars online if you do a walk-up registration Saturday morning, it's thirty dollars.
Okay, so you can just get there.
You can just walk up and look, it's, it's rain or shine, we're prepared to stretch under tents. Uh, we've run in the rain before, it just makes it that much sweeter.
I don't know if it was last year, the year before, it was just raining and everybody showed up and everybody showed up to work and everybody, actually the rain quit about the time we started, the, the run started.
It did, it did, uh, it's gonna be a great day Saturday, uh, again, the course is absolutely beautiful through River Ranch. Um, and we're actually at record numbers on pre-registrations right now, so we're real excited about it.
This is the week you get a lot of people.
This is where people start really signing up.
If people donate money, like somebody was donating a hundred dollars, it's like you took the place of four runners.
That's right.
That, that, and that's big, cause you gotta get to a certain amount, I know you wanted three hundred and forty-five.
We wanted three hundred and forty-five and, and quite precisely, as you mentioned earlier, you didn't even know that, but one hundred more runners and we hit that goal.
I got ESPN, ESPN two, ESPN Network. By the, by the way, uh, you, you almost ruined a fishing trip for me. I got a, I got a fishing trip I'm going on and I was supposed to be going Friday and Saturday and because it's the walk and they wanted the parents to be there, I'm gonna do half a fishing trip and the second half of fishing trip after I come back and I'll be there. Uh, if, you do believe that, don't you?
It's the beauty of the both and, right there.
Or, or do you think my wife said, no, you're coming back and walk?
Well, after, after, after announcing on air that your, your hair turned gray because of your wife, you, you might be home all weekend.
You're right, I shouldn't have said that. But no, no, I'm gonna come back and, uh, I'm actually, do have a trip, I'm gonna run back so I can make it and then go back to my trip. So it's close enough that my trip, I was able to come back and do it because, uh, it's good when the parents are there and the parents of the kids are there. And, uh, I don't care if you might be in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, somebody and you have two or three special needs kids, you wanna get involved, come walk. There's a, now, cause there's the run and there's a walk, talk a little bit about that.
Exactly, we have a buddy walk as well and so, uh, with one of our, uh, option students or anybody from the special needs community that wants to do the quarter mile walk, uh, you can buddy up with them and walk with them. In fact, we try to time it out where the, uh, the buddy walk starts a little bit after the, the, the run so that they finish through the finish line together, it's a pretty cool deal.
Yeah, I remember, I remember watching that last year. They were all coming back at the same time, by the way, Brandon, you heard me, I was watching it as they came through. I did my walk already, Brandon, I got lost, I'm the only one that got lost. Can you remember I went the wrong way, you're supposed to go left and I went right, I was not going left. All right Lance, once again, hit all the high points of, uh, what people need to do real quick.
Hope Fest 5K this Saturday, eight AM, River Ranch in Lafayette, Louisiana. Register online today at CajunTiming.com, that's CajunTiming.com. We do accept walk-up registrations and we are running with joy for the STM options program, those students in that program, whether it's sunny or whether it's some awesome rain, come join us.
And by the way, we'll bring back, uh, bring you back because it's another event that goes with this a little later.
That's exactly right.
Lance Struthers, STM Lance, thank you brother, God bless.
Thank you Moon, thank you Brandon, y'all have a good one.
Hope it works out great, it will work out great. See you tomorrow folks, Hump Day right around the corner.